Mrs. Ross?
Here.
Mr. Coy?
Here.
Mrs. Butler?
Here.
Mrs. Kostic?
Yes.
Mr. Crawford?
Here.
Mr. Bateman?
Here.
Mrs. Wolfmeyer?
Here.
Please rise to the podium.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are set up after we're front tonight just so that we can have our budget discussion in a committee of the whole format. That's why we're up here rather than at horseshoe. We're going to get our business out of the way first and then have our budget discussion at the end of the meeting. We will start with the words recognition. We have our Peoria's finest teacher.
Good evening. Peoria's finest teacher is a monthly recognition that we are sponsoring for those members of PFT that go above and beyond, exemplify best practices in teaching, and will reach out to the community and parents to be involved in our schools. The teachers in this district work so hard to serve the children and families of Peoria each day, and we want to showcase this positive effort. We want to thank our winner's principal, Mr. Durr, and any faculty, friends, and family that are here in support of this month's winner. Our nominator of this month's winner is Tara Boker. Come up Tara. And this month's Peoria's finest teacher is Amy Del Pozo from Heinz Primary. Come up Amy, congratulations.
I have the privilege of working with Mrs. Del Pozo on a daily basis. She has the unique position at Heinz Primary. She is our ELL, English language learner teacher, and she works with five different homeroom teachers and coordinates the services for those students who need her support. The reason I nominated Mrs. Del Pozo is that she's an excellent educator. She puts the children's learning first, and in doing that, sometimes she puts her needs second. She's very flexible. She comes to the classroom teachers and asks us what she can do to help support their further learning. She also works very well with the parents of our students. School, I teach kindergarten, and it's a very new experience for our youngest learners. It's also a new experience for many of their parents, especially the American education system, and Amy is very flexible and goes above and beyond to reach out to those parents and families. Amy is well-loved by all of the teachers and staff in our building, and she is very much loved by her students that she works with. So congratulations.
Well, thank you very much. I'm really humbled, and I guess my motto verse has been, "I can do all things through Christ who strengthens me," and I'm just really appreciative of this, and it just shows how awesome Heinz School is and all the staff and teachers and administrators I work with. The ELL department is so awesome, and just the support that I receive from my family and my wonderful husband. Thank you.
Thank you. Our thanks to Mrs. Del Pozo, congratulations, and to the PFT for doing this every month. It gives us a chance to recognize our very dedicated teachers. We have a lot of them in the district, and so we enjoy seeing this every month. Thank you very much.
Okay, that brings us to announcements. Are there any announcements by board members tonight?
Thank you to our career and technical students at Woodrow Career and Technical Center. We have approximately 270 students in our trades and career classes, representing all three high schools. On Saturday, the students held a trades expo and hair show to invite the community and showcase what they are learning. Our auto body repair students held a cruise in the parking lot. Community vendors, which included our metals manufacturing students, our construction trade students, our health occupation and CNA students, and our engineering students, all had booths represented at the expo. The afternoon finished with our second annual hair show, giving the community a look at the fine job our hair braiding, barbering, and cosmetology students are doing. Thanks to these students and all of our staff for spending a Saturday to give the community a glimpse of our career and technical programs.
Any other announcements?
Thank you. It's time again to start preparing for the 2015-16 school year. This month, there will be a District 150 kindergarten transition fair being held at Holt Health Education Center on Saturday, April the 25th, from 9:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m. At this fair, each District 150 school containing a kindergarten class will be represented. The event is a one-stop shop for families. At the event, parents, families, and families can register their child for kindergarten, learn about kindergarten curriculum, participate in health screenings, and enjoy free food and door prizes. In addition, many of our District 150 schools have a site-based kindergarten roundups you can visit and attend as well. Contact your home school or visit the website for more information. This is an opportunity for you and your child to see the school and kindergarten rooms firsthand. Talk to your child's teacher about the transition process from preschool to kindergarten if you have additional concerns. Lastly, what you need to do in order to register for kindergarten is parents need to have the following documents: proof of address, a physical exam, an eye exam, and a dental examination. Remember, the kindergarten transition fair is April 25th, 2015. This is the day that starts the kindergarten enrollment process. April 27th, following the kindergarten transition fair, enrollment will be open district-wide for all new students in all grade levels. If you have additional questions regarding enrollment for 2015-16 school year, please contact your home school.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This week is our last district-wide parent university of this school year. Before I tell you about the workshops, I'd like to highlight the host of this month's event. Thanks to Richwoods for putting together our display boards. In addition to the information you can read behind me, I want to congratulate the students at Richwoods High School. 61 students were recently named Illinois State Scholars. RHS Senior Lena Golzer has been awarded $2,500 National Merit Scholarship for 2015. Richwoods High School Senior Anna H. Lou has been selected a winner of the State Farm Companies Foundation Scholarship, which is part of the National Merit Scholarship for 2015. A record 11 kids from Richwoods qualified and met the requirements to enter the 2016 National Merit Scholarship Program. On Friday night, Richwoods International Baccalaureate Junior Lucia Di Benito Sanchez will perform with the Peoria Symphony Orchestra at the annual PSO Guide Student Concert. Sanchez won first place in the PSO Young Artist Competition in October 2014. She will play the first movement of the Piano Concerto Number One in G Minor by Felix Mendelssohn. She also will perform in May for the PSO Guild at the Country Club of Peoria. For those that did not know, Richwoods was named by U.S. News and World Report a silver medal in 2013 for one of the best high schools. This is posted on our website in the entrance of the school. Since 2011, the number of IB students tested in higher-level math studies, math, chemistry, and Spanish has tripled and still competes, if not exceeds, with some of the world averages. The number of IB students in our program continues to grow each year, and our junior/senior class has 109 diploma candidates registered for school year 2016. Since 2011, the total number of AP students has tripled, and the number of students who have earned a three or higher on those exams has doubled. All IB and AP teachers are trained in the courses they teach. The district pays for professional development of all the IB and AP teachers and administrators. The district also pays for every student's test exam fees in AP and IB, so no student is denied an opportunity to attain possible college credit for exams. Now, I'll also tell you that knowing firsthand that a lot of these teachers really go above and beyond the call of duty to help these students study for their AP tests. I know my own daughter had a studying session on Sunday hosted by a teacher that, you know, she did of her own free time, her own free will, and greatly appreciated by my wife and I. Those are just some of the facts that Richwoods High School is proud of relating to academics. As I stated earlier, this Thursday is the final parent university of the school year, and we want to see a huge showing of parents and students at the event, hosted this month by Richwoods. Parents can learn about the new tool being used by teachers this year in many schools that offers instructional strategies designed to promote cooperation, communication in the classroom, boost students' confidence, and retain their interest in the classroom interaction. Plus, we encourage parents to bring some workout clothes and join us for a fun, functional, and streamlined fitness method that fuses the best strength training, pilates, and cardio moves with drumming. It's the Pound Fit Rock Out Workout. Don't sound like a DJ in there. Then join us for a workshop with an insurance representative to discuss coverage recommendations and things to think about once your child graduates high school. Workshops will also be offered to educate parents on teen dating violence by the Center for Prevention of Abuse, and Illinois College advising representative will offer a workshop on being scholarship-ready. Free babysitting will be provided, including storytelling and anti-bullying information. Join staff and parents from across our district for the final parent university of the year at Richwoods High School this Thursday, starting with meal at 5:30 p.m.
Thank you. Mr. Crawford?
On Friday, April 17, Peoria Public Schools will host its second annual end-of-year exhibition for students in the High Ability Learners Program. Each school with any students in grades five through eight participates in the district's High Ability Learners Program. The High Ability Learners Program, HAL, begins in the fifth grade year at the child's home school. A learner with high ability is a student who gives evidence of high performance capability in such areas as intellectual, creative, or artistic capacity, or in specific academic fields, and he requires enriched or differentiated curriculum programs in order to develop those capabilities fully. Identified students are grouped daily during intervention enrichment period and/or differentiated small group instruction. During this time, identified students receive enrichment in the core curricular areas: math, English, language arts, science, and social studies through integrated units of study. Emphasis is placed on developing and improving higher-level thinking skills, creativity, and problem-solving. An additional emphasis is placed on working cooperatively with others and developing the social skills necessary to be college and/or career-ready. Teachers who provide instruction and services that are a part of the program for gifted and high ability learners receive professional development that includes nature and needs of gifted, talented students, assessing student needs, differentiation, and curriculum and instruction for gifted students. Some titles of interest for these projects include Top 10 NBA Moments, Bones and Their Purpose, Prepare to Be Horrified, Amazing Adaptations, and Go Fly a Kite. The doors will open at 10 a.m. on Friday, April 17, at Woodrow and Career Technical Center. The exhibition will remain open until 12 p.m. We hope that you can join us.
Thank you. There any other announcements? Mr. Bateman?
Yeah, just want to thank the teachers, staff, and administrators of Lincoln K-8 School. Participated or was present for their staff meeting last Wednesday. Also was invited to stay for their ULT meeting immediately followed. I think the meeting across the board was a good opportunity for staff to share concerns, for the principal to share expectations, and then also want to thank them for allowing me to come back on Friday and tour the school, talk with teachers, talk with the principal, and also, you know, just see what goes on day in the life at Lincoln. So, again, thank you to them.
Thank you. Any other announcements?
I'm going to mention, we all have flyers at our seats that there's going to be a First Annual River City End of the School Year Bash this year on June 6th, from 9:00 to 4:00 at Glen Oak Learning Center. It says there's going to be food, entertainment, and good old-fashioned fun. For more information, you can call 688-3147 or 674-2574. So, it sounds like they're a celebration of the end of the school year. They're going to try this year and see how that goes. Okay, this brings us to approval of minutes. I need a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the March 9, 2015 meeting as corrected, the March 23, 2015 meeting, and the March 30, 2015 meeting. Can I have a second, motion and a second?
I'll move that. Second.
Would you call the roll?
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Coy?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mrs. Kostic?
Aye.
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Mr. Bateman?
Aye.
Mrs. Wolfmeyer?
Aye.
7:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m. security.
Thank you. We are now at audience opportunity to address the board. As a reminder, this is a business meeting of the Board of Education held in public, not a public meeting. It's not a question-and-answer session, and it's not a debate, so there will be no response from the horseshoe unless one of us has comments once the audience comments are completed. Recognizing everyone's First Amendment rights, we still ask that you refrain from speaking about subjects or topics relating directly to district personnel, and also those not germane to the Board of Education's authority. We also ask that you refrain from using inappropriate language and keep a civil tone to your remarks. When you are recognized, please come to the podium and give your name for the record. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. No one under 18 years of age may address the board unless accompanied by a parent, guardian, or teacher without the consent of the majority of the board. Board members are also available by phone and/or email. This contact information is available on the district website and in the school calendars that parents receive from their school. Sharon Cruz.
In May 2012, Dr. Lathan asked the rhetorical question, "What happens when decades of educational malpractice have been allowed to permeate the foundation of an educational system?" Her answer, "Across-the-board failure and completely unacceptable results from staff and students." She called our community, children, parents, and teachers failures. Then she uttered the words by which she chose to be judged. "This pattern of failure will no longer be allowed to continue. The bar has been raised." A few have publicly refuted the retired principal's data taken directly from the Illinois 2014 test results. However, Lathan, with no data to back her up, stated that District 150 has been failing for decades, more than 20 years, right? I do not believe that there's any data to back up her claims. Only in the last decade were tests given to students used to judge schools and teachers. All measuring sticks would have to be very subjective. Unfortunately, Dr. Lathan was not present on February 22, 2010, when the board officially hired her. On that night, Wolfmeyer congratulated the students, staff, and parents for the nine awards given to district schools by the Illinois State Board of Education. The Academic Excellence Award to Washington gifted, Academic Improvement Awards to Woodrow, Sterling, and Harrison, and Spotlight School Awards to Heinz, Rolling Acres, Roosevelt, Whittier, and Woodrow. Spotlight School Awards require that at least 50% of a school's students are from low-income families, and hear this: each Spotlight School must have made AYP during the award year and two prior years. This positive data was actually Lathan's starting point, but she labeled the district a failure from the get-go. Why didn't the board speak up when this criticism was leveled at everyone in the district, including three of you? Now, consider the irony of the Illinois data in light of the 2010 data. Both Harrison and Roosevelt, honored in 2010, dropped to the two lowest elementary schools in the state under Lathan's leadership. Dr. Lathan trusted that the millions she spent on technology, programs, and texts would lead to acceptable AYP scores. It didn't happen. From day one, she bragged she would raise the bar, and she accepted AYP as that bar. Had she approached this task with the humility we all knew was required, she would not have had to hide the test results from the public. Neither No Child Left Behind nor Lathan should have been judge and jury for this district. Thank you.
Dr. Lathan has continually made promises during her tenure in this district. Last week, we had an overwhelming vote in our city that I believe sends a message for our district and its future. The time for change is now, and it's coming. We have two new board members that will be seated in this board, and I believe that that will continue to be what we see in the next 10 years. The city and the citizens that I spoke to when I was out canvassing for this election told me that they are tired of what is happening in our city and seeing families move to the outlying cities, Brimfield, Dunlap, Metamora, Washington, and so forth. And if you look at the construction that's happened around our city, that's where all new construction is happening. You don't see new construction happening within Peoria's city limits. It's just not there. You have to ask yourselves why, and what can we do as a board, what can we do to get our school district onto the right track to keep families here? Since December of 2013, we've been here, and we've been watching, and we've been keeping track of and holding you to honesty about what the future holds for our district and how it is failing. Last meeting, Mr. Bateman basically called me a liar, and I really think you owe me an apology, because the data that I spoke of that night is from the State of Illinois Board of Education, and I don't believe they lie. Secondly, when we look at test scores and we look at scores, it's the only way that we have right now to address whether or not our schools are doing what they're supposed to or not. Your data that you show on your boards, we're supposed to take and totally believe, but if we come up here with data, it's obviously skewed, wrong, or misrepresented. We're tired of it. Tonight, you sit here and you're going to discuss a budget. We all know that the district has no money. Budgets are hard when you don't have any money. How can you run your household if you have no money? Who do you go to? These children need us. They need each and every one of you. This isn't political. This isn't about making a name for yourself to go somewhere else politically. These are our children's lives. We get one chance at their education. Please, ladies and gentlemen, do something. Do something now.
Savino Sierra.
We started late again tonight, and that's not a very good example. I'd just like to shout hallelujah, because we're looking for a new dawn around here. All this old stuff that's been going on is going to be here much longer. I named this board the Echo Board, because I liked hearing when you had a proposal or something, everybody had an A, you know, they just all approved it. And usually, you should have some people that could know a little better and speak up, but no, you people just kept saying with your As, you know what I mean? And so, you know, I've told you that the main thing with our education system here is the discipline in our schools. You haven't done nothing with that, you know what I mean? And don't tell me you have, because I visit the schools, you know? I talk to the kids, you know what I mean? Because I still got grandkids going to school, and I'm going to have some great-grandkids pretty soon, you know? And it's pretty sad, you know, when you see a lot of these kids. You're trying to prepare them for college and all this. You can't even get them, you know, to grasp what we're trying to teach them. And all you're going to do is you're going to raise a bunch of kids that are really bewildered. Because you talk to seniors right now, and what are you going to major in? And I don't know, you know what I mean? And the colleges will tell you, a lot of these kids aren't ready for college, you know? Even the little guys, you're already taking them to the higher places of education. Let them grow naturally, you know, and don't be trying to push them, you know, like the lady said a minute ago, trying to make a name for yourself or something. I don't know. But all this is going to cease, you know? Eventually, the rest of the people that are here tonight, we ain't going to see them too much longer. And when it comes to the budget, you people...
Thank you, Mr. Sierra. That's your time.
Yeah, okay. All right. And just remember what I tell you, because you've been so stubborn all along.
Armosia Surtivan?
Good evening, board. I'm going to apologize in the beginning, because I have a paper due in about three hours. I'm getting my PhD, so I'm going to say this and actually leave. I would like to stay to hear the rest of the dialogue. I'm here representing the Peoria Black Chamber of Commerce. I just want to talk about one thing today, and then I'll be back to talk about more. This whole thing has to change about the attack for Dr. Lathan. I've been listening and hearing and looking at some articles about the exposure that she did to our children for a basketball game, which I thought was awesome. But I didn't hear any articles on the $27,500 check that's cut every year to Holt Center for our healthy living. Again, that is for the exposure to our children to give them health tips, which I think is awesome as well. There's never an article about the $5,000 check that we cut to Wildlife Prairie to once again give our children, what, exposure to nature. We also cut a $10,000 check to the Peoria Park District. I've never seen an article about that, but the moment that we have a basketball game because Dr. Lathan organized it, now there's a problem. Well, let me tell you how I got up to my doctorate. Back in '87, '88, there was a job fair held at the Brandywine Holiday Inn. One of the colleges that was there was Robert Morris College. At that time, they had a campus in Carthage, Illinois. That is how I got enrolled and exposed to college. That is how I got enrolled and exposed to college, because Manuel saw fit to expose me to college. When I was at Robert Morris, five in-state universities, we had a college fair. Robert Morris paid for it. Once again, I got exposed to WIU. Just about three years ago, I was at a lunch in downtown Chicago. One of the universities was there called Colorado Tech University. I then enrolled then to get my master's and now my doctorate there. Exposure is good, which is why she spends so much money on technology. You have to have technology to stay current, and you also have to have current 21st-century textbooks to expose and to teach our children. If you teach them prehistoric things, then you will have prehistoric results. Peoria Black Chamber of Commerce fully supports District 150 and the leadership of Dr. Lathan. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Jesse McGowan Jr., 707 East Thrush, and I'm going to lighten things up a little bit. This is what we're talking about. Most people got this, end of school, you're a River City bash. This is an attempt to get the kids going in the right direction at the end of school. They all hyper, so we're going to have fun for them, and we're also going to slip a little education in that with them, too. ICC is going to be there. There'll be people teaching how to do applications and resumes. There'll be Health Department teaching for healthy living. I mean, there's a whole load of things. Another thing we're hoping to obtain from this is families from all over the city getting together, seeing that, you know, just because I'm from the south end, I'm not a thug, or just because I'm from the north end, I'm not a snob, you know? We get together, everybody can have fun. And everything's going to be free, so you can't say, "Well, I ain't got no money." If you're poor, you can come. If you're rich and don't want to spend your money, you can still come. So, whatever. We want everybody here to be there, so. But my main thing I want to do tonight, though, and I promised my other board I wasn't going to say very much, and I'm not, but I do want to thank Dr. Lathan for partnership and that's what I'm with on this, because once she came on board, everything else went a lot smoother. So, everything is set up now, and I, once again, thank you, Dr. Lathan.
Thank you. Do any board members have response to any of the comments tonight?
The only thing I'd like to say is, when people utilize statistics without failing to understand either the change in definitions and the impact on those, and that has anyone around this table said that everything was peaches and cream in this district? No one has. But if you utilize statistics without understanding the fundamental changes that occur within them, you can draw gross assumptions that are grossly inaccurate and portray a false picture in that. So, we have a number of individuals out in the community that are telling half-truths. And when I was born and raised, I was taught that if, you know, you don't tell the whole truth, then you're lying by omission. So, you take that for what it's worth. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just like to comment on what was said in regards to when Dr. Lathan was selected by the board to become the superintendent of this district. We realized that there were good things happening in the district at the time, but we also realized there were other things that needed to be addressed. And many of you have heard me talk about this in our conversations. It was this board who acknowledged the changes that needed to be made and hired someone as a change agent to speak to the matters at hand so that we could move forward, and we have begun to do that. So, I think when we recount the history of when this administration began, yes, there were good things here, but we still have some good things today that we have done. So, I would like for people just to put that in perspective, especially for the board, to remember, we asked for someone that would come and be strong in instruction and curriculum, and we are seeing that being done. So, I would just like to respond to that, Mrs. Wolfmeyer.
Thank you. Mr. Bateman.
Yeah, one last thing. When I was down, when I had an opportunity, you know, very nice conversation with a number of teachers and that, and it was brought up at the podium about, you know, exposing our young children to college and that. A lot of these kids don't even know what, you know, if you don't have parents who have been to college and know the ropes and that, they don't know what's out there. So, exposing them early to what the possibilities are and that, give them an opportunity to dream, and dream bigger than just their current circumstances, but look beyond where they're currently sitting and recognize that there are opportunities out there for them, and then it becomes incumbent upon teachers, principals, administration to help guide them along that path as those realities become clear to them and help them achieve what they want to be when they grow up. Without that recognition, a lot of them are going to be stuck in the same cycle they're in right now, and we all want them to be able to break that cycle, rise above it, and be, you know, be productive in society, so.
Thank you. The only comment I want to make is, in talking about keeping things in perspective, we heard the word overwhelming tonight about the election, and I've heard many people say the community has spoken. Well, I just want to keep it in perspective that we only had an election in District 3 this year, and only 23% of the voters in District 3 came out and voted. And District 3 makes up approximately 40% of all of the voters in our district, so basically, who we heard from was less than 10% of the voters at this election. Now, I understand we'll hear from more in the coming years as some other seats open up, but I just want people to keep into perspective that it was less than 10% of the community that had the opportunity to speak this time. So, we will hear from others, but we need to keep numbers in perspective. Like everyone has said, you can make numbers say pretty much whatever you want, so. Thank you. Okay, let's go on to information items. Are there any questions on the purchase orders over $2,500 for Mr. Wilcox on this evening?
You always love it when I ask a question, don't you? There are, actually, I'm not sure it's under purchase orders. I think it's under checks, but is this as good a time as any to ask that question? There are two things on there that were items. One of them was a payment to the North Berwin School District for $12,219. I just don't know why would we, what are we paying them for, if you have a recollection of that?
Probably residential placement.
More than likely, it's a residential placement. Call it, we have students who are placed in residential facilities based on their IEPs, and those residential facilities are across the state.
It's also some Gen Ed students.
And some Gen Ed students. It just depends, because some are placed by the court, some are placed by DCFS for hospitalization purposes. Yeah, that's what it is. So, a student that could be, like I said, residential or placed with a different family by chance, so it just depends. If you want to, who the individual student is, we can get that information for you.
No, no, I just, it was curious to see another school district by name, that's all. That was my only interest in it. And then, just to call...
Sometimes you'll see Springfield also. You should, there are different school districts you will see based on the services that they provide.
Okay, so that clears that up. And then, just noting, not objecting or anything, just calling attention to the fact that we spent $167,500 for NWEA testing, which is what we do on an annual basis.
Yes.
Okay, all right. That's it. Thank you.
Any other questions on the POs? Mrs. Ross.
Not a real question. It just seems like, let's see, I can't remember what's in here. I was trying to find out. It appears that the computer system, I thought we had paid for licensing for that already for our Skype work.
Is a bit.
That's the annual.
There's an annual fee to that, I believe, isn't there?
Yeah, I know there's an annual fee, but it seems like we've just paid some kind of fee for them not too very long ago.
This is the payment for next year.
Do we do it all in one payment, or are there... Mr. Cloyt had a question.
Do we accrue that, or do we show it as a cash issue? We would, we're on a cruel basis, so we would charge that expenditure next year. So, that's basically, it's a cash this year, but we charge it to next year's budget.
Any other questions? Okay, that brings us to reports, a request under the Freedom of Information Act and status of such requests.
Since our last board meeting report on March 23, 2015, we received six new Freedom of Information Act requests. Of these new requests, five were filled. There were three pending requests noted on the March 23, 2015 board report. Two requests were filled. We received 36 requests for this calendar year.
Thank you. That brings us to the consent agenda. Tonight's agenda consists of gifts to the school district. This meeting, the total is $1,964. Year-to-date is $49,195.83. The proposed action is that the Board of Education accept the following donations, and letters of appreciation be sent to the donors. Tonight, we have playground equipment donated to Roosevelt Magnet School by the Rotary Club of Peoria North. Number two is the payment of bills. Number three is the Human Resources Report. The proposed action is the appointment, employment, compensation, performance, resignation, retirement, and discharge of an employee. Number four is payment for travel. Number five is Board Policy 7:190, prohibited student conduct. The proposed action is that the Board of Education approve the changes made to Board Policy 7:190 as presented. Item six is Board Policy 7:180, prevention of and response to bullying and other aggressive behaviors. The proposed action is that the Board of Education approve new Board Policy 7:180, prevention of and response to bullying and other aggressive behaviors. Student dress code formerly Board Policy 7:180 will now be known as Board Policy 7:155. Are there any of these that a board would like pulled for a separate vote? Could I have a motion and a second on the consent agenda, then? Does the policy committee want to briefly talk about the two board policies? We did discuss these at the last meeting as an information item.
Yeah, I'd be happy to, and Ms. Kostick could join in on this. Item number five is Board Policy 7190, prohibited student contact conduct. This is a minor change in this policy, but it addresses the issue of the distribution or sale or any other form of unauthorized provision of non-prescription medicines within the school. And this addresses an issue that's come up recently, simply the fact that if it's something that you have for your own consumption, it's not an issue, but you're not to share it with other students, and it's not to be sold or distributed. So, that's the essence of that change. Item number 180 is prevention, 7:180 is prevention of and response to bullying. This is required by changes in the state school code, which were passed late last summer. There's a deadline for passage and adoption of this by the 15th of April, so we are right at the point where we must do something. We spent a good deal of time on this, and Mr. Redberg could maybe speak to this to some extent, too, and it is that the policy and the legislation, the legislation was drafted in a very directive fashion, and it is very cumbersome for a policy, and it requires a substantial amount of administrative procedure that goes with it. And we are adopting this tonight with the knowledge that, we're proposing it tonight with the knowledge that this will probably take some revision and editing, and it may take place fairly soon as other school districts and other legal entities struggle with how to do this. There is a substantial administrative burden to using this policy, and it is pretty much dictated by the new school code issues.
Can we just point out that this is another unfunded mandate?
Yes, there's another unfunded mandate, and the reporting, investigation, and documentation, and remediation activities that are demanded by the state are a substantial administrative cost and burden. That is not to say bullying is not an issue that we need to deal with, but it is extremely burdensome in the way the state has dictated how this is to be addressed. Ms. Kostick, would you care to add to that?
Thank you. One of the things that I definitely would like to add is that, as we move forward in establishing this particular policy, we realize that it's an issue that is school-wide, it's district-wide, shall I say. One of the things that we did notice is that the training on the bullying and so forth is limited to certain areas within administration. One of the things that we definitely would like to see is that PD training extended to teachers so that they know exactly how to handle the bullying that is going on, because I think that they are probably the, aside from the SROs, they are probably the first people that are on-site when bullying is taking place, especially if it's taking place within the school. So, I would like to recommend that we include that at the beginning of the year with the PD training for the teachers, because I think it's very, very, it's something that is definitely needed. I think it would cut down on injuries to teachers and so forth, if they know exactly how they are to handle issues that come up with fights and things like that. So, that's one of the definite recommendations that I would make. Thank you.
Could I add something to that, too? And that is that the new state statute includes a much broader definition of cyberbullying, and it does not have to originate on a computer, on school district property, or on a school district-owned computer. It can take place and originate off-campus. It can take place and originate any other place, but if it does impact the environment in the school situation, it falls under that and can be dealt with from a discipline standpoint. So, things that are posted on social media that take into account, or meet within the definition of bullying, even though it was done at home or someplace else, off-school grounds, could find it is, in effect, a serious issue of bullying, and we can address it under the new school code.
Another issue as far as bullying is concerned is that many times that we don't consider bullying a one-time act, but according to the policy that is written, bullying can be classified as bullying on a one-time occurrence. So, that's something that we all need to be made aware of as we move forward, that it doesn't have to be multiple incidents. It can be a one-time occurrence. Thank you.
Mrs. Ross.
What was the purpose of it? Was the change in number, did that come from the state, from 7:180? What was the reason for the change in the number?
The reason was that the press service that's provided by the Illinois Associate School Boards has a numbering format, and there's a lot of cross-references in those, and there's another one, 7:20, I believe, that references among these three issues. And what we're trying to do is bring the numbering, our numbering form, in line with what the state Board of the Illinois Associate School Boards uses, so that when there are other edits and revisions in the future, the cross-references don't get lost.
Okay, so, as we know, it's 7:180 is folded into 7:155 expanded.
Well, actually, we just, there's no change to the current 7180. It's just got a new number. There's no change in the text or content. It's just renumbered so that it has, it stands alone, and it falls within the sequence of numbers that they use.
But the bullying, the additional bullying codes are all included in that?
718.
718, okay.
Our policy generally does follow the number system from IASB. Occasionally, the board will develop its own policy, and I suspect that is how that Mrs. Bastian generally picks out numbers that make sense, and sometimes, what happened here is basically, we already have something parked in where they want to put it, so we're just moving on.
The only other issue would be if there's any other...
The only other issue would be if there's any other disciplinary issues that are written up to fall under the current seven one eighty. Those need to be addressed in the future under seven one fifty-five, well, the dress code.
I just wanted to add that, even though I know the paperwork is burdensome, I sort of welcome this, because I have a big concern that there is a whole lot of bullying going on in our schools that no one is aware of, that either kids are afraid to talk about, or they go to an adult, and the adult doesn't take them seriously enough. And I believe that if there is a report, it is now mandated that a form has to be filled out and reported to the principal if any adult in the building is talked to by a student. The other thing, too, I think the policy calls for not only an email address that can be used rather anonymously, but a phone number that individuals can call and report bullying anonymously, so that children or parents that are afraid of retaliation have a way of contacting someone, at least the first contact with...without being afraid.
That would be in the administrative procedure.
Okay. Thank you.
And that's what I was going to ask about, the administrative procedure. You know, I was instrumental in helping to put together all the discipline policies. So the administrative procedure is going to be changed to meet the current...okay, that will be coming up.
It was written to reflect what is required in the policy. The policy is much longer than our policy was, and many portions of that actually sound like administrative procedure, but there's also another document that's eight pages that talks about the reporting and administrative procedures beyond that.
Right. So we'll know what inflections go with what.
Right.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments on the consent agenda tonight? Would you call the roll?
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Cloy?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mrs. Kostic?
Aye.
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Mr. Bateman?
Aye.
Mrs. Upmyer?
Aye.
Seven nine zero nays, motion carried.
That brings us to the deliberation...oh.
Excuse me. We need to notify the State Board of Education that we have adopted this policy to advance the deadline, so.
Yeah, we'll take it.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to deliberation agenda, which is discipline.
Yes. Item number seven, review of suspensions, proposed as amended. The proposed action is that the review of suspensions as amended listed on the report dated April thirteenth, two thousand and fifteen, be approved as amended.
Second.
Would you call the roll?
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Cloy?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mrs. Kostic?
Aye.
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Mr. Bateman?
Aye.
Mrs. Upmyer?
Aye.
Seven nine zero nays, motion carried.
Item eight, expulsions. The proposed action is that the expulsions listed on the report dated April thirteenth, two thousand and fifteen, be approved as presented.
Second.
Would you call the roll?
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Cloy?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mrs. Kostic?
Aye.
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Mr. Bateman?
Aye.
Mrs. Upmyer?
Aye.
Seven nine zero nays, motion carried.
Thank you. That brings us to our budget discussion for the evening. We set it up here, committee at the hall, because it just seems like we get a lot better discussion on important items as we set up this way. I think the...we had the presentation in our last meeting, so I think this is an opportunity for board members to ask questions, get clarification, initiate discussion on the different items that were proposed. Correct me if I'm wrong, the item...at one time, the board told administration that with the deficit we were facing, we wanted everything on the table for us to look at with the costs that go along with it, and that's what you pretty much provided in the presentation. So am I correct in remembering that if we did everything, all the cuts that you presented, it would bring us within two or three million dollars of a balanced budget, not counting the Woodruff piece? Is that fairly correct?
Yes, there's still some additional changes.
Okay. The only point I'm trying to make is that we need to keep in mind that we need to look at all of these very carefully, but every one that we add back in is going to add to the deficit. So we just need to make decisions on what's important enough to keep, or...I mean, the question can be, okay, I want to keep this, find something else to take out instead. So that's sort of where the discussion is at. I don't know if...I know we asked if you could get some of your questions ahead of time. If not, that's fine. We'll just sort of put you on your spot. You want to start with a couple of comments?
Yes, please, thank you. First, I'd just like to say a special thank you to the entire staff that's behind me for your hard work as we presented and put together recommendations. Once again, just to reiterate what you stated, these were recommendations from the staff. Board members, we're asking for your input and your suggestions as we move forward, but we do want to say thank you again. This was a very tough process as we move forward, and we did keep our children and our staff in mind, but we are in some tough times, and these tough times were brought on by our state, not our district, and we hope that people will keep that in their forefront when they talk about our deficit. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Will Coxon, that has some comments.
Start singing.
Do karaoke?
We had that.
We had people sing at the meeting.
It might be better, actually. Yeah. I thought it might be helpful to spend just a minute or two on a couple of things. One, just to kind of review where we were at the budget reductions, but also talk a little bit about process and where we are today. So in the current year, again, our operating budget, as the board president said, is eleven point five million. At the current...and we presented this last meeting, at the current revenue and spending trends, that deficit will grow by about six million a year if we continue with the same expenditure and spending rates that we've had. And by two thousand and eighteen, the operating deficit would be about thirty million dollars. Based on our current spending levels, the district will be in a negative cash position in May of two thousand and sixteen, meaning we'll have to borrow money for payroll. If spending is not reduced, that borrowing will increase each year. Since the budget presentation two weeks ago to the board, we know now that the governor and general assembly are reducing our current-year funding by about one point two million, meaning our current-year operating deficit will grow to about twelve point seven million. The spending reductions were not easy. These were tough recommendations to develop, and we can...will be tough to implement. They might not be the final recommendations, but I hope, as the superintendent said, that we can sustain the total budget cuts. That spending level will be necessary for the long-term financial health of the district. Also, wanted to just talk a minute about process. When the board adopted the fiscal year two thousand and fifteen budget last September, the board discussed the need for earlier budget planning by starting budget development in the fall prior...or preceding the next fiscal year. In keeping with that schedule, the entire superintendent's cabinet started initial budget discussions last October, and began program and staffing planning and priority setting the following month. And as the superintendent mentioned, it's the people on the wall behind us that were involved with those discussions. That budget planning was inclusive and focused on two areas, identifying and prioritizing program initiatives, and reviewing establishing staffing levels. The preliminary recommendations in these two areas were incorporated into the initial budget recommendations presented to the board at the last meeting on March twenty-third. The cabinet's initial recommendations were presented to facilitate further budget discussions as we work towards balancing the operating budget and approve the district's financial position. We're now at the time for board comment on those recommendations. After the board's comments, a second set of recommendations will be presented to the board in May, and the complete budget recommendations will be presented to the board in August, prior to adoption of the budget in September. That concludes...
My first question, real quickly, though, is if we're going to be looking at getting decisions on specific things from us, so that we don't have to wait till August to call people back, correct? I mean, we're going to...our goal is going to be to make some decisions, not the final total budget, but we need to make some decisions sooner rather than later, so that we can recall people that we're going to need, correct?
Yes, we'd like to have the discussion in May. We will bring back another set of recommendations, and hopefully those will be closer.
Okay.
And the final recommendations will come to the board in August, as typically we do in the run, on the public file for thirty days.
I guess we just start, board members, if you have questions or comments, or how you want to go. Mrs. Ross?
I want to start out with a couple of questions. Could I have that mic? Thank you.
That's fine. Okay.
I want to start out with a couple of questions. I heard you indicate that you and a group of administrators actually sat down and worked through this and presented these recommendations. Is that correct? Okay. So my question is...well, one question is, did we reach out to...and I'm having...I have the history here, so I'll just go back to what...did we reach out to the administrators of each one of our schools and asked them to include them in this scenario as to, here's where we are, and what can you do from your perspective, from your school, to assist with this deficit? Did we reach out to them?
We had conversations with principals. Our most recent conversation with principals and assistant principals was March the seventeenth, St. Patrick's Day. So that was our most recent conversation. Then also, over the past two weeks, principals have been in reviewing their Title I budgets that will continue to go into next week, if I'm not mistaken. We have the one last group, but we have spoken with administrators, also spoke with a group of U L T teacher leaders. Mr. Bateman actually was at that meeting, where we talked about, here are our challenges, here are the things that we need to do. We're trying to protect these particular positions. We're trying to protect this, and to get that input. So overall, we did receive information from principals, and like I said, those teacher leaders also were at a meeting about three weeks ago, if I'm not mistaken, when they were here.
Okay. So I guess I'm looking at whether or not they were...their considerations were included in the overall suggestions?
Yes, because some...
So let me just get it clear. Each one of the schools were able to look at their own budgets and their own spending, and were able to submit some ideas and some suggestions as to how each one of them could participate in lowering the budget, right?
They were asked and shared with them, if you had a choice over one set of positions or something else over the other, what would you be wanting to keep? And as you prepare your Title I budget, like, for example, some schools were losing...we had high schools with two interventionists, and some of our K-eight schools with two interventionists. They were going down to one interventionist. They were able to look at their Title I monies. If they were able to purchase that, then they could purchase that position back from Title I. Some principals shared they were looking for positions as opposed to programs, but they were looking for different things. So it just depended on the individual schools and what overall they wanted for their particular school, but understanding if they had to give up something, this is what they wanted to give up over keeping something else. We did share with them, we were making recommendations. For example, Woodruff and Knoxville Center are two prime examples. We still had to recommend that, because that is something extra that the board has taken on, but that information was presented. One of the things that came back from Woodruff was, in order to...if we could...can I reduce by one or two teachers to say this, and this other particular area will do this? So that was the input that we received back. Some schools, some principals advocated, some principals did not advocate, but they knew that they had that option to provide that input.
Okay. But I was just...I was just trying to be clear as to whether they had the option to provide that input before administration decided on what was going to be presented. That was my original question.
Yes, and there have been ongoing discussions. Okay, so we didn't just start this past month, right before the recommendations came to the board. There have been ongoing discussions about our budget and our finances with principals and those concerns. And if you think back, it goes back to really two years ago that we started these discussions. Some grants have ended, and we started forecasting for principals, this is where you're going to be. Full-service community schools is another example that was under Bradley. That grant ran out. Those positions were picked up through Family Core, but those salaries were committed for one year. Beyond that, those salaries would be reduced because of those grant fundings or lack thereof.
Okay. So as I...and I don't want to...I've got lots of questions, so anybody else can chime in anytime you want. In looking at the fiscal year eleven through fifteen, district operating funds, revenue and expenditures, and of course, this is what they say was audited. Well, it just says M at the bottom, but there's lots of Ms.
Who was on present?
Pardon me?
Who's presenting that page?
I think she's on the very first one. Is she on the first one?
I went through three.
Just behind financial position. Do I have an O copy? Is that what you're saying?
No, no. No, you're fine.
Right, okay.
It's page seventeen.
Oh, okay. That's who presented. I know. It's the same page, it just has an M on it. I don't know how you got seventeen, but anyway.
I remember the PowerPoint.
Oh, okay, you remember the PowerPoint. Good memory. Okay, so what I wanted to ask about on that particular page, in two thousand and eleven, we had a surplus of nine point five million dollars. Is that correct? M. And in two thousand and twelve, now this is what was audited, I'm told, in two thousand and twelve, we had a surplus of three point seven million, or three point eight, close to three point eight. Two thousand and thirteen, with a surplus of one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, four hundred and ninety-four dollars. And that all, of course, anybody can add that up, adds up to thirteen million, four hundred and seventy-four thousand, two hundred and eighty-one. So if that adds up to that, and then, of course, in two thousand and fourteen, with a deficit of eight point six million, correct? So with that, that left us in a positive of four point eight million.
Those numbers are cumulative.
Well, I'm just trying to...I'm just reading what I'm reading. When you say not cumulative, what are you saying?
That means at the end of the year, that's what's left in your account, but you don't add up the Ms. of the years consecutively to get a total.
Well, I'm just going by what I see here. In essence, without what you say the state is going to take back from us, our deficit would be around six million. Is that not true? Did you include what you say the state is going to actually take or not going to pay us? And that should ask the question.
Okay, so these are the annual operating deficits. So these are...the other piece that you're asking is about the fund balance. Where is the fund balance for these operating funds? So we started in the Ed Fund, and we started two thousand and fifteen with a surplus of six point one million dollars. By the end of fifteen, we will end with three point eight in the negative. Add to that the other cut from state funding, and we're at, you know, we're approaching five million dollars in a negative fund balance position at the end of fifteen.
Okay. I think we're saying pretty much the same thing, even though it's not cumulative. But if the state does not cut, then the numbers would...
The state has already cut. They've passed the bill, and it is law now, so that is going to happen.
So it couldn't go back in?
No, the General Assembly passed the bill, and the governor's already signed the legislation.
Okay, we're talking about last year, then. So I know a letter had been submitted indicating that there was a request to put it back in. I don't know how they would bring it back to us, but there was a letter requesting that. So somebody else asks a question, because I have some more.
Mr. Crawford?
Can the administration shed a little more detail on...it was mentioned that with our reductions, we'd have larger class sizes. For me, I'd like to see those larger class sizes weighted towards our older children, because I think the smaller class sizes for younger children are more important.
So I know a letter had been submitted indicating that, that there was a request to put it back in. I don't know how they would bring it back to us, but there was a letter requesting that. So someone else asks a question, because I have, I have some more.
Mr. Crawford?
Can the administration shed a little more detail on, it was mentioned that with our reductions, we'd have larger class sizes. For me, I'd like to see those larger class sizes weighted towards our older children, because I think the smaller class sizes for younger children are more important. Would that be something the administration agrees with?
We'll make a note of that. I mean, we looked at going up the class size for all the levels.
Right.
But we will make a note and we'll have to go back and play around with numbers.
Do you, I mean, do you think there's, is it important to weight it so that the younger children are not as greatly affected by larger class sizes?
Yes and no. I think it should, it actually should depend on the class, it's what the class is.
Okay.
I mean, you know-
Like reading?
Like reading. Or you take an AP class versus a strategic reading class. Well, strategic reading means the student needs that double dose of reading, so they already struggle. So that's a ninth, let's say a ninth grade class. Well, if you're going to take a class size larger, to me, it would be the AP class before you do the strategic reading class. That's why I said we would have to look at it by classes.
Right. And I think, and I, I mean, I think that maybe high school kids, I can see that. I can see where they, they're, if you've gotten to that level where you're AP in high school, you probably have a capacity to learn on your own a little bit more and you don't need to have the individualized instruction as much. Moreover, I would think that, you know, if you've gotten that far, you're pretty disciplined in your studies as it is and you're going to get a lot out of your classroom work. Whereas younger children, I guess, from my perspective, it's important that they have that individualized attention. That's, that's what I would like for the administration to focus on going forward. And if that means cutting it someplace else, while not, not at the expense of our younger kids for larger class sizes, I'd be in favor of that.
Just, just to kind of, I noticed an increase, at least in K through eight staffing at some point in that budget proposal, didn't it? Did that?
Additional K eight seats was four and a half.
Four and a half.
But class size adjustment, K through one is to twenty-seven.
Right.
I think that's what he's referring to.
Okay. If I could do a little handout here? I like, I like pictures. I guess I'm a visual learner here. Just, just to put this in perspective, and I think it's very difficult to get a big picture look at some of this, this is the two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen budget. Show it to the audience here. It's just a bar graph. The point is, there was a question last time when we were talking about, what are support services? What's instruction? And then there are really three broad categories. There's support services, instruction and debt service. And then you see the, the funds that we have, the Ed Fund, the O N M Fund, Transportation, I M R F, capital, tort, H L S, health, life, safety, bonds, the Public Building Commission, rent. The point of this is, in my management accounting class, they said, look for the big number. Well, there's the big number in red. And right next to it's the big yellow number. And right next to that, a little bit smaller yellow number. We cannot solve this problem fiddling around with the little numbers. So we've got to make some tough decisions and it's got to be in those first two rows of the Ed Fund and the O N M Fund. That's where it's got to come from. And I don't think we can adjust the debt service because that's debt service we're required to pay. We're not going to default on our bonds. H L S is pretty much cut to the bone. Tort is there and we have costs associated with that. Capital has been reduced. And then you have I M R F, which is really a function of how many people you have employed. So the point of this is, if you look for the big number, there's only a couple of places to go and that's where we've got to do this.
I think most of my questions, and I've got quite a few too, but most of mine are along the lines of who and what is going to be impacted by some of these cuts. That's, that's my concerns. The first one I'm going to, I'm going to bring up is, in the proposal, you're eliminating, are you eliminating all building monitors? Is that, I mean, is that the recommendation? Not the recommendation. Is that what's in this proposal?
That's what's in it.
Okay. So what is the plan for building safety in their absence? I'm not saying that you might not be able to look and find some places where we don't need as many in each building, but, and I'm sure they serve a different purpose in, in every building. I know some of the schools have got limited access entry now, so it's not as important to have someone there to have you sign in as you go in, but some schools don't. I mean, you can still walk in and out as you please and, or, you know, I just, I'm real concerned that some of the schools use those people in a very effective way to help in the hallways during, between classes and when kids are out. So I guess that's my, that's my question is, is this, how is this going to affect the safety of the buildings? Do we have to eliminate all of them or can you look at each building and see where we, maybe there's places we don't actually need them?
What we've looked at is possibly needing five for two, at two high schools and three middle schools. For example, this summer, we will complete the security entrance process at Richwood. So when you come in now, it'll, you'll go directly into the office, so we'll be taking care of it there. Calvin Coolidge should be finalized before school starts. So right now, we're looking at, and if I'm wrong, please correct me, it was manual, because the estimates right now to read, to secure the entrance at manual, the way it needs to be done, would cost us seventy-five thousand dollars. So that's the projected amount, right? So manual would still need at least a building up for the front.
So you're saying cut five?
No, cut all but five is what we were talking about, if we need to bring those back, if we're not able to secure that entrance at manual. So that was one. P O Y High in the back, where we added the new entrance for the science wing coming in there. And then our three middle schools, help me out, which one am I? Lincoln, Treeland, no, no.
Lincoln.
Lincoln and what was the other discussion this morning? It was day treatment and day treatment. So those were the schools that we talked about, still needing the possibility of building monitors.
So sort of getting back to Mrs. Ross's question, have you talked to the principals about how they feel it's going to affect the safety in their building by eliminating these positions?
The building monitors, we did not go into full discussions around building monitors because we were looking at classroom positions, so looking at keeping teachers. So those were the discussions of those instructional support positions that they needed to keep. Some discussions, like I said, that's why we were finalizing Richwood's and Calvin Coolidge. Manual, we still know that's ongoing concern based on what we needed to do there. Lincoln, it was this concern because when you come in, there are two ways that you could go, so we cannot secure those entrances without having that building monitor there.
And I know that's talking about as people come in to the buildings. Are schools using the building monitors in other ways besides at the entrances? And how will the lack of having those affect safety in the building? And that's what I'm specifically looking at, is safety.
Some, yes, they are, from my understanding, using building monitors throughout in the hallways also, like transition time. And so that would be more responsibility placed on teachers and principals to monitor during class change. Also, as we look at the hiring of our S R Os, we were looking at that staffing of how we assign and allot S R Os. And so we will need to do some shifting and some coverage and assigning of positions in the building where people will be monitoring during those class times and those transition times.
Thank you. I've learned a lot from Mr. Chloe. So I have a show and tell as well. Good. I want to address the issue, and I don't have enough confidence for everybody. I want to address the issue of the strategic plan that we have embarked upon and spent a lot of time on. And one of the major issues, I hope we can all agree, is that, that came out of that was discipline or lack of discipline. And I want to, I want to talk a little bit about program that, that we have in our schools that, and this was the other issue, a reason I asked if you actually spoke with the people about how they would be able to participate in. I'm sorry, I don't have enough confidence for everybody. But I want to talk a little bit about the Elite Program, which, if you'll agree, there's enough here for everybody. One of the things I'd like to, I'd like to do is to make sure we have all the information. And in order to have all the information, we really need to look at more than just what's on paper. I asked a question last time regarding the amount of money that you had listed for, for the Elite Program, and I asked for a breakdown of that, itemized breakdown of that and what that meant. Because I, I have some information that I've just passed out to you. First of all, I think we have to look at, what are we going to do without the needed services with the children that we have in the school district? And so if we don't have the discipline, the managing of the discipline problems or the managing, managing of behaviors, then I'm not sure, I'm not sure how we would be able to operate, because it's been identified as a major problem. Is that not right? Did you get a copy? Sorry. You're right here next to me. Okay. What I've passed out to you is basically what has been spent in Elite and what the Elite Program has brought to the district. Without the district spending money, and also the third page there is the value add. And if you'll take a look at these and tell me if you agree with administration, if you agree with, with this, this report or not. Because you said that there was a, we were going to cut four hundred and, let me see if I can find that page, four hundred and twenty-five thousand. And I asked a question, what added to, what added up to four hundred and twenty-five thousand? And I can't come up with that, that amount. But, you know, that's beside the point. The point is, have we talked to the Elite contract person to find out what, how can we say this program, it's a needed program? We said it was needed. Do you agree that it was a needed program, the reason why we were doing it?
It was a needed program at the time that we implemented it.
And, and so with, with all the information that has come out in the strategic plan, we still need something to manage behavior in some of our schools. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, I mean, have we talked to people to say, that's the reason I said, have we talked to principals, to say, what can you bring to the table that can help us, you know, diminish this budget and still keep the program in place? And I think if you look at these and you, you agree with some of the things that have already been brought in to the district, would kind of balance out any money that we've spent. If the numbers are correct. If you, if they're not, you know, please take that back and verify if the numbers are correct. And I, I would say to them, okay, we need to cut this budget and what can you bring to the table, if this is a needed program? So I guess I'm not sure why we, we didn't, you know, reach out to people and ask them, what can you bring to the table in order for us to keep what is, has been determined is, is a needed program? Or, you know, it's a needed service. Let's put it like that.
I'll jump in just on the, the numbers. You're, and we'll go back and try to calculate where your numbers came from. I do see that they're labeled expenses for two thousand and fourteen, fifteen. The numbers that, the four twenty-five that we included in our summary were budgeted numbers. So there may be some difference between actual budget and actual expenditures. So we can-
So I M I F I is going to add up to almost fifty thousand dollars for two people?
Okay. Well, then, if we, I asked for a breakdown on those, what that all meant. But I guess the bottom line is, if, if, if we're going to do a strategic plan, then it would seem to me that we're wasting our time if we're not going to try to address services that are needed within our schools. And I haven't heard anything from anybody as to how we're going to replace those or actually provide those services.
And I agree. Elite came in originally down at Treeland and did a fantastic job of turning that building around that was in absolute chaos. I guess I always thought, and I guess I was wrong, I always thought that once they were in a building for a year or two and got the culture turned around and got things in place, that they would move on to the next trouble spot.
Ideally.
Ideally. I guess, I understand that they, they do a lot of things besides just in those two schools, but a lot of that is through the Park District.
Some of it.
And some of it is. I guess I have to look at this, that yes, we do need a service to deal with discipline in our buildings. However, right now, we're spending, let's say, split the difference, four hundred thousand dollars just in two buildings. I mean, those are the expenses just for those two buildings. Am I correct?
Yes.
Well, that's, those are the expenses on, on paper, but as you can see, most of those expenses are coming back.
It's still-
Back to the district.
But, but those numbers don't include, well, I understand, there's things coming back to the district, but out of our Ed Fund, we are still having to spend four hundred thousand dollars on two buildings. We have got discipline problems in that all over the district. I would probably be more, and I'm not saying I'm not going to support keeping the Elite Program, but I'd probably be more ready to do that if we're moving on to another trouble spot, to try and turn things around. Well, and I never understood why they went to Harrison, to be perfectly honest with you, because I was not hearing a lot of problems at Harrison. At that point, we were having horrible problems at Glen Oak. And my opinion was that's where it should have gone. It didn't. We got the right people in Glen Oak who were able to turn that around on their own. But I'm not sure that I can support continuing just to spend that money in the same two buildings all the time. And I understand we're getting more benefit than just those two buildings, but a lot of that is through other programs. So I mean, that's where I'm coming from as we have this discussion.
Yeah. And I think that, you know, I think what you're saying is correct. I mean, ideally, you go into a building, you train the staff that, you know, and, and to handle whatever, to provide the services that are, you know, that are, are unique to that particular program and the staff takes it on and you move on to the next. I understand that. But that, that is not what we're proposing here, is just to cut it out altogether. And then, and with that, I'd like to say that, you know, the, the letters that were sent out said the board had already decided to eliminate the program.
Well, and, and I think we cleared up that was not true. And I think we found out the wording on the letters that went to the employees said that the board had made that decision. The attorneys, not our attorney, but the attorney firm came up with that language. In my understanding and talking to them, it was, they worded it the way school code, they felt it had to be worded. We have not cut anything yet, obviously. And that's what we're, we're here to, to discuss, but- Yeah, the language you've used before.
It has never been used that we were eliminating that program. But, but beside that, I think we have to look at the big picture. If we're going to continue to, to provide a public education, we have to think about more, and I, I'm, dollars and cents is where it is, I understand that, but we have to think about more than just dollars and cents. You know? And so it's, it's really incumbent upon us to look at more than just the numbers. I know we have a number of people here, cut this, cut that, but, but what can other people bring to the table to help us get the job done? I've often said, it's going to take the community to get this done. And I mean, I just want us to look at more than just the budget. We have to look at the students. We still have fourteen thousand students. And we're talking about cutting teachers in areas, and I, and last I checked, we didn't even have teachers in some of the, some of the classrooms. We had subs in there for long-term subs. And, and a sub, nothing wrong with the sub, but you just have to have a degree in poop pu, pu, picking or whatever. And you just have to have a degree. And I'm not saying they're not qualified, they can be qualified, but what I'm saying is, you've got to have the right people in front of the children, because I represent over six thousand students, families in my district. I, I, I feel first district, and if you look at the statistics, you know, we're, we're the, we're in poverty- I'm the first district, and if you look at the statistics, you know, we're in poverty in that area, and there needs to be more resources put in this area because of the needs there. I may not be making sense, but I'm telling you, I'm thinking about the students. I'm not thinking as much about cutting the budget, because I think we can find ways of cutting the budget. Ms. Wolfmeyer and I were on a budget cut committee one year, we just went crazy cutting the budget, looking at, you know, recommendations for cutting the budget.
And I think that's part of our problem, Mrs. Ross, is we did start that back in, what, 2011 or 2000, what was, before that, it was before she came. And I think what we're looking at, and this is my frustration, is you can only cut so much. I mean, this, my concern is that this is the year that we're having to make cuts that are going to affect the students and the staff.
Well, then, we need to let somebody else do this job then, if we're going to affect the students to that degree.
Well, but I disagree. I mean, it doesn't matter who'd be sitting in this spot, we've got to make the same decisions. And we have to make decisions that will affect the children the least, but just like with increasing class sizes, that's going to affect the kids, it's going to affect the staff. I don't know that we can, I mean, if we want to approve an $11 million deficit budget for next year, then we can keep it all in. And I, it'll be more than that.
What's the percentage? I mean, let's put this in perspective, what's the percentage we're talking about cutting out of this total budget?
Total expenditures in operating funds, $176 million.
So, find a way to eliminate $11 million budget deficit, right?
Eighteen million.
Eighteen million, but 10%.
10%.
A large portion come from a particular area. And that's what makes it, to be an effect.
I understand it. I'm not, I don't mean to minimize it, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to put a, there are companies that do this all the time. Why can't we? Face the music, I mean, it just has to be, I mean, I saw the budget presentation, it was a balanced approach, everybody took it on the chin. And I don't, I don't like this as much as anybody else, but I mean, you know, we're going to have this, we don't want to be going into receivership or something, and also wake up one day, the state's controlling what we're doing.
I got a question. Excuse me, I haven't had a long time. Okay. I guess I truly understand, I do understand, and I guess my questions or my concerns are some of the same concerns that Ms. Ross has and Ms. Wolfmeyer. We heard over and over and over and over in strategic planning, discipline, 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 that's going on in the schools and everything. And when I look at the possibility of the detail of education fund budget reductions, I become concerned, because it seems that every entity that is working toward trying to alleviate or trying to minimize the discipline areas are having major, major cuts. As far as, I mean, I don't understand the Woodruff Safe School, the program reduction is $488,000. What portion of that, is that the, is that the whole program? That's, I need to understand that, and I'm not done.
No, that was one of my questions too, Ms. Kostick.
Okay. So then, secondly, now, we're talking about Knoxville. What, I mean, we just, we're going to wipe out, what we're looking at is the possibility of wiping out every program that is helping or trying to minimize the discipline that is existing in this district, and that is, I find that deplorable. Additionally, with the Elite program, here's the thing, okay, we know that Elite works. We have a tremendous discipline issue. You know, you can hardly talk to anybody in this district, and the word discipline out of control does not come up. So, we know that exists. I understand having to cut the budget, I do understand that. But doggone it, I can't see us cutting off our nose despite our face. And so, we have got to look at taking away, looking at a way of being able to maintain those programs that work. Elite, as far as Elite is concerned, you know what, if it works, let's take it to two more schools. You know, after a year, a year and a half or whatever, those people that are in that school should have been trained enough to be able to maintain this program and continue it on forward. Doggone it, look how many years we held on to Edison. You know, it's, I mean, by the time that, by this time, we need to be able to carry your own baggage and be able to move forward with the program. You've got all of the, you've got all of the tools to work with. Now, let's move it on to some, move it on to another school rather than to get rid of it. We cannot afford, as a district, to remove all of the programs that are giving us some kind of help with this discipline issue. You know, I'm just saying it the way it is. I could care less whether you agree with me or not.
What the governor did is a done deal. She's requesting for the, not to give us money.
Right. To kind of dovetail off of what Ms. Ross and Ms. Kostick brought up, Mr. Wilcox, I sent you an email asking you about, you know, if we had to scale back Elite to one school, what's that impact? What's that look like? My particular thoughts, just to share that with the entire board, was scale it back to one school and apply it at Lincoln, is my thought. But I'd like to understand, if we scaled it back to one school specifically looking at applying it at Lincoln, what would that cost look like?
Well, we have a $50,000 district licensing fee, and at Treewind, they have a lead and three staff, and it's 166,000. So, it's about $200,000 at one school, the least expensive of the two.
And I'll give you a little bit of history on that. When we started Elite, there were, there was one school, and it was $80,000 for the licensing. We pay a lot more than that for licensing, we just talked about paying licensing fee. But, to help the district in negotiation with Dr. Lathan, we added another school and then lowered the license fee to 50,000. You know, in addition to the people that are leads and the people that work there, there's just so much more that goes on besides that. And they are considered, I guess, part-time, because they received letters to say they were considered part-time, but yet I can, and I've asked the question to the lawyer and to everyone else, how are they considered part-time if they are like a contract, once a year, contract, and they work full-time, from seven to four, whatever the case may be?
They're not full-time. Those aren't 40-hour-a-week jobs.
Well, I mean, I just want to know how they're considered part-time.
Thirty or more hours is full-time, correct?
I thought maybe it was that benefits were involved.
No, it's seven hours.
I can't seem to get that particular answer as to why they would be considered part-time when they work full days.
Isn't it healthy?
They get health insurance.
So, they do. But 32 hours constitutes full-time.
It depends on what benefits.
It would just seem to me that there's enough issue here that we're not going to solve it here tonight, but there may be a good deal of flexibility and creativity if you go back to the folks involved in the program and say, look, there may be other ways to do this. What ideas do you have? And what can you bring to the table in terms of other resources from outside the school district that might help us with this issue? And look at it in a broader basis of some behavior and discipline issues, taking into account what we need to do with our school resource officers, with the contract with the city for armed security and so forth. There's a bigger picture of all these things together. Why don't we try and look at it maybe that way and see what we could elicit some different approaches to this?
And keep in mind that what we've normally done in the past is, when a new principal goes into a building, we allow them to conduct a needs assessment of what they, based on the data, their interaction with staff, feel that they need for resources in order to move that building forward. So, we just need to kind of keep that in mind with new leadership going in at our different schools.
Right. And then, I just had a question, sort of a process question in terms of, we can't wait until late August or September to make decisions affecting people's employment. So, there's a real need to do this and do it in prompt fashion. So, these decisions have to be made before we know what the state's ever going to budget for the coming year. So, can we get, by the next time we meet, some idea of what sort of our drop dead date is in terms of the people issues? Because the people, if you don't have the people, the programs aren't going to happen.
Honestly speaking, we need recommendations from the board, I mean, really by the first board meeting in May, so that, which is the May 12 board meeting, so we can start making recommendations and bringing people back if that's the recommendation. So, we're kind of waiting for the board to give us some guidance as to moving forward.
Okay. So, we're talking about having made some pretty hard decisions by a month from today.
A month from today, basically. Yes. And keep in mind, the recommendations that were made, especially just to go back as it relates to like Woodruff and Knoxville Center, those were additional options. But we gave you the information to say, you wanted to know what the figures are costing us. And I'll tell you, another thing, it's getting ready to send people probably shockwaves through your system, we looked at also, what does Washington gifted cost us? That is something extra that the board has assumed the responsibility to do to have a separate school for gifted education, but that is not a requirement. So, that's another one that tonight, that we, after we left you the last time, we went back and looked at other things, because I knew, you know, there were concerns about us presenting Woodruff and the Knoxville Center, which are alternative schools. Well, Washington gifted is another alternative option. So, we've looked at that, and we have that total cost also. But these are just things that we share, because everything was supposed to be placed on the table.
Okay. And I have two more questions. One of them is, what are the consequences of us running a deficit of three or four million dollars? Even if we make significant cuts, what are the consequences of that, number one? Number two, the budget included, I think $5 million of bonds issued for health, life, safety. So, that means we have to go, and we can do that without a referendum, as I understand it, because it's for health, life, safety. Is that correct? So, there's going to be an impact on the tax levy, and it would be nice to know what that is, in terms of what impact it is on our total levy and how that would affect taxpayers. So, the consequences of a three or four million dollar deficit, and I know the cash flow is a huge issue there, and then what about the bonds? So, those are my two questions, and I don't expect an answer right now, but things that we need to get on the table quickly.
We also want to know the consequences if you do not make the drastic cuts of a 10 to 15 million dollar deficit.
Please, yeah. That sort of goes without saying, but we cannot continue to do what we're doing. So, we are not going to be able to borrow 15, 18 million dollars to fund operations. We cannot do that.
Well, and the other big variable that's sitting out there is what's the sake going to do with our general state aid appropriation this year? We all, you know, didn't expect a cut this late in fiscal year for 2015, and we don't know how that's going to transpire or translate into our 2016 appropriation. I predict it won't go up.
Well, one thing I will say is that two of the last things I am going to support cutting will be Woodruff and Knoxville. So, I will not support cutting those.
You know, for me on Washington gifted.
Pardon me?
Washington gifted, I'll take that position.
Okay. I have a quick question on eliminating the custodial positions. There were 14 positions in there, and I know you listed down the line exactly where they were going to be at. Here's my concern, is in eliminating those custodial positions in some of the places, is there still going to be enough coverage to get the work done? One of the things I'm thinking of is here at the admin building. You've got to, sometimes you have to open the building, close the building, things like that, get ready for board meetings. The other thing is, it looked to me like the position at the stadium, the warehouse and technology, there were going to be zero. So, I want to know who's going to be doing that work, which trade positions are up for elimination? And will we have to start contracting out for that? And even though I know we won't be paying benefits, my guess is, the hourly rate's going to be a whole lot more, so is that really going to be a savings? But, other than just saying the custodians, the guardians are going to have to step up and do more, I would like to know how this, what the plan is for getting these places covered and the work done.
All right, the idea of, I know you talked about accountability, which is something we discuss about accountability, but it goes more with the rescheduling of custodians. We can be aggressive on scheduling custodians based on a seven-five schedule. If we eliminate the seven-five schedule, which one of their proposals, we can stretch out the scheduling, which we can beat some of these.
Play yours with a seven-five schedule.
Okay, seven-five schedule, for everybody doesn't know. It's seven hours during the week, and they work five hours on Saturday. The proposal was to eliminate the Saturday five hours, which constitutes overtime, and the savings was potentially 75 to 100,000.
Is that instead of the 14? Instead of the 14 people?
Well, then, it would be 16, because then you're talking two more bodies potentially.
So, it would go up and not down?
No, we're talking about looking at other ideas instead of bodies.
You said overtime, you said overtime.
Could we use personnel, not bodies?
I'm sorry?
Use personnel, not bodies, thank you.
Yeah. So, go ahead.
So, my question is, so, you're saying that without the 14 people that you have listed here, that you can still get the job done? Wasn't that the question?
Absolutely.
If you can still get the job done, so that means you could have got the job done without them in the first place, right?
Well, some of the positions that were on there, that were, that we talked about eliminating, were some that weren't there in the last five years. And the district, at the time, we tried to, what we thought was right-size that school to help it. You know, Beliskin was one of them, as identified on their manual, was another one. So, in essence, which is frustrating, because you see it on a lot of other things, that we're basically going to have to undo some of these things that we've tried to do. So, with that, with coinciding with being aggressive on our scheduling, I think we can achieve that. That's for, to address the custodial. As far as the stadium, the buildings and grounds, the stadium being more of a seasonal type of work, growing seeds obviously is where it's busy, and I currently do it, and I have done that. I've shifted manpower between the shop and the stadium to meet all those needs. The two positions as far as the trades was a painter and a carpenter. We have taken that proposal to the union for discussion, and that was, that was a big if, so that we're, right now, we're.
We're still looking at it.
Absolutely. So, and as far as contracting out, it doesn't impact any contracting, because since I've been doing this, anything that's outside our capacity has always been contracted. I have not contracted any work out from any of our departments, unless if department and the need was absolutely, we had to have it now or it was an emergency, or like I said, it was beyond our capacity to even do the work.
Okay. You're saying you're cutting a carpenter and a painter. Do you still have, are there still, are you just eliminating one of each? Or, will there still be a painter on staff and a carpenter?
Absolutely, you'll still have three carpenters, or no, you'll still have two carpenters, you'll still have three painters. It's a proposal, like I said.
Right, okay.
And of all the, of all the cuts that you see that come from the O and M from my department, that was the biggest if, by far. That was the toughest, but like I said, like Dr. Lathan said, we put everything out there to look at, so.
So, in other words, what you're saying is that in the last few years, because you had the positions, you went ahead and sort of beefed up the personnel at some of the buildings, and that those extra personnel at the buildings will just have to be taken back?
Because.
And if you were how we're going to get those examples of new additions, like at Lincoln as an example?
Yeah, new additions. You know, we looked at Lincoln, obviously, we wanted it, anytime you build something like that, and as beautiful as Lincoln the addition was, we wanted to staff it to make sure it met. Well, now we've had an assessment to look at it, we think we can scale back one. And I mean, also to understand, you know, I walk through these buildings, I see things, and I have, you know, experiences being in all the levels in maintenance in the past, and I see things that we can do, and this is why it was presented, so.
Thank you.
No, of course. What's, Dave, Dave, excuse me, what is the, what's the difference on the cuts for Knoxville Center at a half, half reduction person and Knoxville closure? Is that anticipating that that one whole custodian on the fact that the building of closing that facility, is that what that's based on?
Absolutely not. The half position for Knoxville is, if you look at the square footage of the building, that building can be achieved with one custodian. that building can be achieved with one custodian.
Yeah.
It was, it was performed at Greeley years ago with three times the square footage, three floors.
Okay.
And that, um, the custodial staff there, one, was able to perform that for a building three times the size of Knoxville.
That's not, my question-
Your question?
My question is, um, okay, there was a half, there was a half of staff reduction and then it's titled Knoxville closure, one position. So, I guess my question is, was that anticipation of Knoxville closing not what you're answering?
Yeah, that's, the full position is a separate issue from the half.
The half is if Knoxville stays, it's the recommendation.
That's right.
So, there's two custodians, there's, are there-
One point five or yes, two. He works four hours there and he goes to the other half to carry on.
Okay, got you. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I, I want, I have a question. What is directed enhancement funds?
Directed enhancement funds?
Two hundred thousand.
I, I O's or the instructional officers at that level are able to put in place, you know, it could be that, um, an actual extra staff person was needed or there was stipends needed for something, is it just having a little bit of flexibility instead of all at the school level, having a small portion at the administrative level and saying that you can do that.
Any of mine?
There's a license at that level?
So, they're all, they're all school, they're all school improvement funds, but instead of allocating them initially to the, to the school, you allocate them to an IIO that can target them to certain needs at various schools.
Example of a reindeer needs?
Pardon me?
What example of what that needs at each school?
Training, tutoring.
Equipment.
Equipment. It just depends on the needs of the particular school.
Just a little more flexibility.
For example, this time off.
Well, what do you think of the numbers?
Well, they have a seven rate school.
Seven rate school.
It's not a huge amount for a school.
Question. Um, speaking of I I O's, um, Delensky's retiring this year, am I correct?
Yes. Yes, he is.
Yes?
Yes.
Are we, um, leaving that position open and then just delegating his responsibilities otherwise?
That is the recommendation right now?
Got you.
It's coming down.
Um, and these are not questions I enjoy asking. Let's just put that straight up front. As we look at the budget and looking ahead, when you think of all non-bargaining unit employees, because there's merit increases plugged into this, we can do nothing with in terms, merit increases, sorry, that's annual pay raises, that are in contracts we can do nothing about. But, for employees that are not represented by bargaining units, what have we programmed into next year's budget that if we cap, if we pulled that out, eliminated annual pay raise, what would that represent?
Well, again, we haven't built the 2016 budget yet, so there's, there's, it's not built in there. But, the non-bargaining unit employees' salaries total eight million dollars. Um, a reasonable increase based on the collective bargaining agreements would be about two point seven five percent, which is about two hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars.
And then if you, again, not a question I'm looking forward to ask, but if you threw on top of that a five or ten percent pay cut for all non-bargaining unit employees?
Well, eight million, if you did five percent, it would be about four hundred thousand dollars. But, uh, again, there's, there's non-bargaining unit employees that supervise bargaining unit employees that make less than the people that they supervise and you're going to have recruitment problems. You could have principals wanting to go back to teaching. Um, there's-
Remember, remember, this started off with everything on the table.
Sure.
That's why I'm asking. I know they're not popular questions, I know it creates problems, but if we're going to be fair, we need to look at everything on the table. So, I mean, I, I get it, I understand, but likewise.
Can I dovetail on that? Now, that's why I asked early on, did everybody get an opportunity to say, I mean, I think if it were me, in order to keep my job, I, I wouldn't mind taking a small cut or whatever or free, we've done the freezing before.
Freezing's a big difference from asking for people to take a-
Well, I, I mean, would you rather not have a job or would you rather take a small pay cut?
Well, can I just? Uh, that's a good question because one of the questions that was asked about, um, when I, um, offered for an employee to take a promotion, uh, that was one of the questions that if I take this promotion, will I be taking a, a salary cut to take this promotion? Uh, so, that is a recom, I mean, that's a question that people will ask when you're going to give them additional responsibilities. That was one of the questions that was asked this morning at seven thirty, um, about that is you want me to assume additional responsibilities, will I have to take a pay cut in order to, to take this position?
Um, just so I'm clear on what you're asking, are you asking for, um, this among all district employees? Are you asking that we go back to the unions and ask for pay reductions or just non-bargaining unit employees?
You talking about me? Oh, um, I think we could probably, uh, we, we said none, I was dovetailing on what he said, non-bargaining units.
Just non-bargaining.
But, and when we bargain with, with a, with a, uh, a group, I mean, that's the time to really, we've done that before too.
But, some of those-
I know some of those contracts have already been done and some, some have not, so. But, I was really, I was dovetailing on that.
Okay, Mr. Baynes, question.
Is that it?
Yeah. Okay. Just, just a question too, in terms of thinking about this. What are we mandated to do? In other words, what are, what are we required by state school code to do? Which would seem to me to be the base of what we got to spend. That's, that's-
Staff classrooms with, with qualified teachers that-
What grades? Are we, are you-
We're not, we're mandated to do kindergarten through twelfth grade, if you say, if that's what you're asking.
That's, that was, it was just all of the things, you know, there's a laundry list of stuff that we're mandated to do.
Well-
So, yes, I understand that, so. We're, we're mandated to provide education at a certain level for a certain population, okay? So, that would seem to me to be the base of what we've, we've got to provide. Now, how we do that, to what extent, is another matter. So, is there a way to do this and say, okay, we've got a list of things here, what are the things on this list that are, I, I assume that we're not cutting anything out of this that we are mandated to do?
Well, it's, uh, the bullying policy that came up today.
Yeah.
Or, are we going to fully implement the bullying policy?
What's that?
It's a state mandate, it's a state mandate.
Okay.
So, how are we going to handle that in relation to budget?
Well, we'll try and do it as efficiently as possible.
Isn't that done at each school?
Yeah.
It is. But, the administrator, a building administrator is going to be required to conduct the investigation. So, if you're a singleton building, like a Von Steuben next door, that will just have the principal, and in addition to, let's say, twenty-five evaluations that that person might be responsible for completing and all the other daily, daily requirements of a principal, that is an unfunded mandate that somebody's going to have to assume those responsibilities to complete that.
That was, that was my point, is that there's a certain level of things we are required to do and that, that is the point, you can try and do them as efficiently, as effectively as possible, but you can't stop doing certain things.
In addition, in reference to the salary cut, that, that question just came in Friday, uh, so, we did not, we'll be meeting with principals and assistant principals tomorrow and Wednesday, um, have a chance to propose that to them, but we will take that to them and share that information with them tomorrow and Wednesday.
Can I ask about the, do, do we still have thirty-seven million dollars in the working cash?
We do have a fund balance and working cash.
Fund balance, uh, thirty-seven million dollars. And at one point, we had zero in there because it was, it was costed out because of a budget problem in the past. And the idea was, and that we would keep that money in there if we need to borrow from ourselves and pay ourselves back.
That's what we do. That's exactly what we do.
Yeah. I'm, I'm understanding that, but I'm just saying that at one point, we didn't have that, we had to do teacher orders and teacher grants and, and those kind of things to balance. So, so, we've been struggling with this type of, um, you know, budget for a while now. But, when I look at the, the amount that's, that's in there, we must be paying ourselves back because it's still in there, right?
We do pay ourselves back, you're required by law to pay yourself back.
Yeah.
But, it also, it, it gets us through cash flow when we're waiting for property tax receipts primarily.
Right.
And, and we will, even with that cash balance, that's when we're projecting May of 2016, we will actually go in the negative. And so, we will be issuing debt again to, to make payroll.
Can we do tax anticipation warrants rather than debt?
Well, that is, I mean, it is-
Well, that's short-term though, but it's sort of about-
Yeah, that'd be short-term debt because we'll get our property taxes then soon after that.
It seems to me from the discussion going around that what we need to do is let you as an administration know what things, and I think we've been getting a little bit of this, what things are important to us, whether it's to keep the class size at K through two down or the discipline and keep Woodruff and keep Knoxville Center and those things. I guess if, if we give you our ideas of what's important to us to keep, I guess my first question is, are there some of these things that we could scale back but still keep some of it? Um, like at Woodruff and Knoxville, are there some things that we could do to, to scale it back a little bit but still keep all those programs up and running? Um, I mean, that, that defeats the purpose of what we want to use them for because basically what we're going to do is cut back so we can't have as many kids there. Um, but, I don't know if it helps you to know what things are more important to us so that you can look for other things you can cut or you can come up with ideas to get, find a way to do some of it. Do you understand what I'm, I'm asking? I mean, does that help, like Mr., you know, Washington Gifted is obvi, is important to him. Uh, some, several have said that, that, uh, Woodruff and Knoxville Center Elite is, is important, the K through two is important to keep the class size down. That doesn't give you any answers at this point, but does it give you something to work with that maybe you can work around to try and come up with a way to do those things?
Well, I, I think it's helpful because, I mean, again, we're talking about process and we're, we're at the point where we wanted to get board input on these initial recommendations. Um, and we've heard a lot of things that are important to the board and that's the direction we need to staff. I think the other side of that is what is less important to the board? And maybe you want to send that to us in a top-secret email that we'll promise not to share with anybody, but, but that's, that's the other side of the story.
Yeah.
We need to figure out how to balance these things. We've heard of, um, really high priorities of the board and, by multiple board members that, that we need to factor into this budget, but we also need to know what's the other side? Where can you help us and, and look at some other things? Because we've actually had a very, um, lengthy and inclusive process to get to where we are today and it would be helpful if, if, you know.
And I guess one of the other things that I need too is, and some of these programs are talking about cutting like, or, or, I don't know if you're eliminating or cutting them back, but like, there's money in there to take out of Pinpoint, there's money to take out of Paxton Labs. I guess I need to know, because I don't know, but from the district standpoint, how important are those programs? I mean, some things are just going to have to go. We don't have a-
We're not giving them out. What you're seeing is we're not adding any more labs, so that will be the same, like the Paxton Patterson, we're not adding any additional labs. The staff has been trained, uh, we have internal capacity now to train the new people that come on board, so if there's a new teacher in a particular classroom. Pinpoint, that was initial, uh, part of our, uh, four years ago, we had our seed grants, our technology grants.
Okay.
So, we're finishing off making those last payments. So, that's why you're seeing this sa- savings. Remember, it was partially funded through grant fund, partially funded through the ed fund, so we will not have that payment, um, as we move forward. So, that's when you're seeing those savings, it doesn't necessarily mean we're eliminating some, we just will not have to place paper that moving forward.
Okay. Mr. Crawford?
Is that, is that this information that you're talking about that-
Different things, yes ma'am.
Okay. And, and so, on, okay, so, for the accelerated reader, blah, blah, this, that, um, first of all, what is, what is, uh, the career exploitation, exploration for Woodruff? What is that? That it's a hundred and eighty thousand?
So, that was the Paxton Patterson, that should-
Woodruff, that's all apart?
For Woodruff.
For Woodruff, career exploration?
Oh, no, 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 that, those are all of our CTE, uh, our CTE classes, where we added all of the equipment and, am I correct? For our CTE programs that we added four years ago now, right? Yeah. So, we've trained staff, we've purchased the equipment, so that's the savings, we're saying that we will not like to have to add another lab. Like, this year, we added the CNA piece, the culinary arts component, some things we, you know, we remodeled the kitchen last year, uh, summer at Woodruff. So, we've taken care of putting everything in place. This is just the savings that we will save from not having to add additional, uh, components to those existing labs. So, it wouldn't be in the budget anyway because you're not adding it.
Right, because it's not, right.
But, it was in the budget, the previous, the previous budget.
It's in the fifteen budget.
The current budget.
So, this, so this hundred and, so this hundred and eighty thousand, for instance, for Woodruff career exploration, that, that is to be accounted for in 2015? That's, that's an expenditure in 2015? Is that correct? That won't be in 2016?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. Okay. Um, duh, 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 duh. Illinois Virtual School, that's a, that's a, is that a, that's a credit, that's a what?
Increase.
An increase. If it's a negative number, it's an increase.
Increase.
The longer days?
Obviously. Nothing.
Eliminate longer days at Franklin Northmore Rolling Acres.
Program, are they going additional fifteen minutes beyond the school day than the other schools in the district? And so, we've, I got your question, I'm really asking.
So, if we eliminate, if we eliminate this, a longer school day, so, students, starting with the fifteenth, sixteenth school year, it would not be a choice school, student parents will still have the opportunity to apply for a boundary waiver if space exists in those buildings, but we would not be providing the transportation for choice, uh, and then they would not have the longer school day. Uh, the students who are currently there, so if I'm a second grader, I would be able to finish to fourth grade.
Textbooks.
We needed to purchase, uh, adoption for math this year, so that's for, for, for next year. That's being put, placed on hold and we reduced the textbook budget by one million dollars that will be reduced for the upcoming school year.
And I had asked through-
Oh, we got your, yes.
And I had asked through an email what we could do if those were done digitally versus physically.
They're evil.
Yeah, evil.
But, they don't get the books in the way.
Yeah, we wanted, we wanted to do that, Michelle. Well, these are, um, I'll say, quick numbers for you, but, um, looking at a six-year life cycle on textbooks, the paper textbooks, uh, look like district's annual cost is two hundred and eighty-one thousand. If we went to digital textbooks-
Just from a high school, this is just one high school, one class example.
Just high school, so it's what, thirty-three hundred students, uh, high school students.
And remember, we have to buy devices for all these students, and there's other issues, you know, it's maintaining those, having somebody on staff to actually manage the program for the devices. But over the six years, it would be 100, 1.8 million dollars. So, it would be significantly more expensive to do that. I mean, you're talking about book licenses and.
That's one subject area.
Right.
Okay.
No, understood. That's.
Thank you.
Jump in quick.
How, is there any effectiveness in discussing with our vendors about taking a pay cut and saying, hey, we don't have the money to purchase your products. You got to give us a discount. Go ahead.
They do.
They do? Okay.
For example, with the algebra, the math textbooks we wanted to purchase originally, they were like 800 and about $800,000, and they were sold to us for six.
Okay.
Those probably staff.
Maybe there are some retired car dealers that can help us with our efforts.
Well, we are getting more aggressive with purchasing.
Right. No, I appreciate that.
An example is the copiers. We were incredibly aggressive with that. We got incredible prices on that. So, we are getting more aggressive in bidding and those types of things.
Well, I guess, I guess from my standpoint as a board member is that we're going to make a number of suggestions to you guys about how to cut, but frankly, I don't think any of us know all the ingredients that go into creating an effective education. I would just appreciate the utmost honesty to say, look, at these training, for instance, let's just take training or conferences, for instance. Look, these things are helpful, but frankly, they're extra things that we just can't afford right now. So, if that means eliminating conferences that aren't tied to grants and things like that, then you do it. And that'd be my directive as a board member. I, because I don't want to speak out of turn and saying, you ought to eliminate that because, you can easily come back to me and say, no, no, Chris, that's important to the ingredient. It's an important ingredient to the education of a child.
But I think it's important to note, as it relates to professional development, that money that's being used is title monies and is grant funded.
And that's what I mean.
That has to be used for professional development. That includes the travel, because, you know, sometimes districts will do a freeze on travel. Well, if, for example, Avid is a prime example. It's only a certain location where you have to go, and in order to be in Avid School, you have to go to that training. But once again, that's Title II monies that we're using, that we must use for training in order to meet that requirement through our federal funding.
Right. And that's what I meant by saying funds that are not otherwise restricted by grants and title, you know, does, you know, specific federal grants and those kind of things, so.
Can I just jump in for one second? Again, this is a little different process, I think, than has happened in the past here. And I know that the people behind us were all involved, and we staggered at first trying to get through this, and we've gotten a little rhythm. And the recommendations, we feel good about what we put on the table initially, but I think we'll get better at this as we do it more. And so, I hope you have some confidence in the staff that will continue to look at these things, and that we appreciate the input, and we'll go back and we'll get the team together, and we'll continue to do this.
Two things. One, do we have any opportunity for school improvement grants?
Our last option for school improvement grant was, grants were last year. If you recall, we had that discussion, and it was based on the time that we had already placed our new leadership in those buildings. And if we had applied for those grants, we would have had to remove the principals that we had just placed. So, that, I mean, I think that was a cool agreement not to pursue those. Have not received anything. Chetay or Carla, have you heard anything on new release of school improvement grants? Have we? Haven't heard anything recently, so. But that was why, if you recall.
And are those restricted only to high schools, or are they restricted, are they available?
No, remember that last year, we had several schools, Glen Oak, Harrison, Manuel, again, that was eligible, and Treewind, Manuel, Harrison, and I mean, not Peoria High, because they were finishing up. It's one other school, but remember, Oak Glit, did I say Glen Oak?
Mm-mm.
Okay. So, we had already placed.
So, did you have a retirement or something else where somebody, well, the leadership in the school was turning, it was turning over? Is that an opportunity where you can do that?
It's just not that. Remember.
Your staff is removed also.
If you go to Peoria High, you have to overturn that whole school.
Okay.
And that's what I think people forget in the past several years of things that we've done.
Right.
Some things were required by a grant in order. And also, keep in mind, Eve, goes back to even our balances as it relates to our deficit. Those monies, that $2 million per year for Peoria High and Manuel factored into our budget. So, it helped our bottom line.
Right.
And I think, like I said, sometimes people forget about that.
Mr. Crawford asked a question about, you know, businesses do this all the time. Why can't we? Well, we can to some extent, but many times, this happens in the face of fewer customers. We still have the same number of customers.
Right.
And it's sort of rhetorical answer, but at the same time, there's some things about the way businesses do this that frankly can be pretty ugly, but they are for the purpose of survival because they have no tax base. If the customers don't have the revenue to generate, you cut your costs, you go out of business. So, it's pretty, pretty simple. And I would also say, having been through these exercises in a number of different business settings over the years, I know this is not easy. I know this is difficult on the staff. It is emotional. It is gut-wrenching. You don't sleep at night because of it. None of it is good to do, but we have no choice, and I thank you for your efforts in this. I know that it is not easy. I know that it impacts your family and your friends and the people that you work with as coworkers and colleagues, and we'll get through it, but it will be tough.
And this is really a new experience for us as board members. We've never been involved, I don't think, at this, in this much detail, and it makes it more difficult. It really does. And I know it's getting later tonight, but I would like, a couple of things I would like you to address the next time we talk about this is, and I don't know, maybe these are too generic questions. I need to get a sense of, we're cutting 14 teacher positions and 26 teacher positions. I need to get a feel for where those are at and what it's going to do. You know, the teacher positions, does that mean we're not going to offer something at the high school? Or, you know, I need to get a feel for that. Not that I can do anything about it, but I need to understand that. So, and I don't want you to go into that. And I know you also have a handout that had all the questions from all the board members. If you would give that to us as we, when we're done, so that we can look what other board members asked, and I think it has, don't you have that? And then it has question, answers to it. I think that might help us to see what other people that we didn't get to tonight, and then, then we can certainly continue to send in questions or make phone calls and with suggestions and ideas that pop into our head or whatever. But I agree with Mr. Crawford. I really rely on you and your staff to be the experts here. I mean, I can certainly say, well, we need to get rid of this program, but I don't, that's why I'm saying, I don't know what the impact of that is. So, I need you guys to help me understand if we get rid of this or that, what impact it's going to have on the students.
One last thing, too. I know we've asked about the engagement of principals in that, too, but I'd also encourage us to engage teachers and ask them for those opportunities they see, also for where there's savings, where we can cut costs, and still maintain appropriate levels of instruction and educational value.
And I'm always dovetailing, but you actually said what I was going to say. Again, I'd like to reiterate the fact that, that if you own the process, you take better care of it. I mean, I think that, that the principals, first of all, should have been in at the very beginning, asking them what they, what they could do for their particular school, and also any service, services that we, service organizations or contracts that we have, offering that if we felt, feel it's, if it feels a needed service and something we'd like to keep, we could involve them in the process. I, again, think that, that everybody needs to be involved, and everybody can be a part of this solution. But you already, you really highlighted some things that we had talked about here today. And so, I think we should go back and look at what this impact is going to be. You know, the intervention is, the lack of teachers and the lack of, you know, but I've said what I had to say. I'm not in support of cutting a lot of the things that are here. And I thought that what you brought to us was a proposal. And that's why I took it as a proposal. We're proposing, these are some ideas. So, that's why.
And I also think it's important that we include, and I've had a brief conversation with Mr. Atkins Dutroux about this, that the unions can certainly step up and give us some of their ideas that they get from their members, and as they talk about these things, they're out in the schools and in the classrooms. They know what, maybe what they feel can be gotten rid of, or what things are very important. So, I think that's one way of getting the employee and the staff input is through our unions also. So, I think it's important that we hear from all of that. I'm not suggesting that anybody take a pay cut. So, you know, I don't know, does anybody else have anything else they want to add tonight or anything else they want to ask? I think it was a good discussion.
How soon will we hear back from staff on the suggestions that we've made?
We can talk again at the next board meeting. If you have any questions before then, get them to them, or any suggestions or anything.
Okay, we can talk again then, but they're going to come, they're going to go back and look at some of the suggestions we've made, right?
I think so. Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any presentations and suggestions by board members tonight, other than what we've already made? Mr. Bateman.
Kind of, when you look, when you think about the conversation we just had on budgets, I'd encourage and ask the policy committee to review Board Policy 6,310, Credit for Alternative Courses and Programs and Course Substitutions. If our mission truly is to ensure that each student reaches his or her fullest academic and personal potential as a well-balanced citizen, and our vision is to take pride in educating and graduating each student prepared and inspired to contribute to the world, why would we limit only seniors to be able to take correspondence? And I know a lot of this, because I even went out and looked at policies at Dunlap, and I've got a feeling that a lot of this is mirroring the State Board of Education's policies. But in this time, in this period, with the technology we have available and the budget challenges we have, why would we not look at providing our students opportunities to gain course credit for correspondence courses, college courses, not just to seniors, but freshmen, juniors, sophomores? They, all of them should have the opportunity to be able to do that. Why are we limiting our students from taking only courses that aren't offered by the school district? Why can we not allow students, especially when you start looking at schedule challenges, conflicts that a lot of these students go through, why are we limiting it to courses not offered by the school? Why can't we allow these students to take correspondence courses or distance learning classes on courses we do offer? Because they may have challenges with scheduling and that, which could cause problems with graduation later. I also would ask us to look in the areas of foreign language credits. Not every student has these kinds of opportunities, but I do know of students during the summers that do have opportunities to travel abroad and have, and gain opportunities for immersion in, in language, as well as the opportunity to take language classes in that country, say France, for example. They have opportunities to take classes in French in that country, and we refuse to recognize those as educational opportunities and provide credit for that. And that's a shame, because a lot of kids, not a lot of kids, but we do have kids out there that do have opportunities for these diverse opportunities, and we're literally looking at them and telling them that their situation doesn't count. And I think that's wrong. And finally, I'd ask us to look at our policies on international baccalaureate classes. Board members, you've been watching dialogue between Dr. Kennedy and a parent on this topic. I'd encourage us to look at what our policies are for allowing non-IB students, when there are openings in IB classes, to provide diversity in those classes, because that's actually what you're talking about when a non-IB student is allowed to take those types of courses. These are, if we're wanting to get students back in, you know, look outside the box, do out-of-the-box thinking of how we're going to try and bring people back in and show that we're willing to work with families and work with those that have the drive and initiative. Now, these aren't easy things, because, you know, we're asking students or allowing students to take classes in excess to their current instructional time in, you know, in their high schools and that. But if the kid's got the drive, desire, and the initiative to resource it, to research it, and the parents are willing to fund it to allow that student to do these additional classes, why would we not recognize it? So, I just ask that we look at that and look at these, especially in these tough budget times, how we provide opportunities for our students outside of what we're able to provide. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other presentations or suggestions?
Suggestions? I've brought this up in the past, that we, we want, we should, we should include some members of the public in certain areas to help us do what we're doing and collaborate with others. I still suggest that we establish a finance committee that includes those experts from outside of the district who may be able to bring some very valuable information to us. We've had that in the past, and I think it worked really well. But we, I think we have to come to terms with, we cannot do this alone, or in a vacuum, we're going to have to figure out how to act, and collaborate with others. So, I would suggest that we establish a finance committee that, and the first thing would be to look at like a five-year, you know, plan. So, that's mine.
Any other suggestions or presentations by board members? Any committee reports?
May 7.
We have a policy committee meeting on May 7.
Okay.
May 7, I think that's it.
Right.
Seeing nothing else, can I have a motion with Jordan? Thank you very much, everybody.
No, I'm tired. Up at 3:30 this morning.
Mark. 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 Kick it, or pull it back, Mike Eriksen.
Thank you.
If you were doing that just as.
She's got me, too.
Just put one on the table.
Mr. Gilchrist, thank you for bringing this out, Russ.
I appreciate that. I like your attitude.
I appreciate that.
I appreciate that.